Today's meeting is being televised by Milford TV. If anybody would like a copy, please contact a member of the administration or a member of the school committee. Our first order of business is approval of minutes. So I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Motion from Jim, seconded by Joe. All in favor? Next order of business is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Does anyone have any announcements tonight? Jim?
Yes, I would like to announce the Milford Youth Center Telethon fundraiser to benefit the Milford Youth Center Music Room and Studio. There will be live bands, acts, performances, interviews, and much more. This will take place on Saturday, August 19th, from four to 10:00 PM. Milford TV Comcast eight version Verizon Comcast, it's channel eight on Verizon, it's channel thirty-eight, sorry you'd think I'd know that by now. Streaming live on milfordtv.net and obviously the community is welcome to come down to the studio for that live as well. So, thank you.
Mike?
Joe, I'd like to send a thank you to the Highway Department for the work they've done at the Memorial School. I don't know if anybody's seen it. The trees that cut down and the parking lot that got repaired. It really, really looks nice. So, special thank you. I believe it was the Highway Department that participated in it. So, thank you. Great job.
Any others?
I've just got some dates. I just want to share what I view in public, just some key dates. The opening of school is right around the corner. August 24th is our open house throughout the Milford Public Schools and that's from nine to 12:00. So if you want to tour the schools and classrooms. The teachers report on August 28th and the first day of school for grades one through twelve is August 30th. The first day of school for preschool is September 5th and the first day of school for kindergarten is September 7th. Thanks, Joe.
Anyone else? Alright, next order of business is the invitation to speak. Do we have anyone here that would like to address the board? Not seeing anyone, move on. Next order of business is update on the solar proposal for the Woodland Elementary School.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to address kind of three key points there and we're actually moving along very well with the project. We had some questions around procurement and Select is part of the power options program which is regulated and run by the state. And this actually addresses the procurement and bid questions because it's part of kind of a statewide program and they're a participant in that program. Rob Quinn also had an opportunity to review the implementation plan and the layout of the solar panels on the roof and there were some questions about access to some of our heating and cooling systems up there. And those questions were also addressed. Rob was able to kind of walk around the roof with the team and kind of lay out where the access points were. He was very comfortable with the accessibility of, you know, if we had to do any repairs or maintenance on any of the systems that are located on the roof at Woodland. The third piece, which was the biggest piece, was the roof warranty. And there were some questions about the impact on the warranty. And we're very comfortable with the process they have in place. There's a inspection that's done prior to the installation. The roofing companies installers actually do the, any drilling of the holes. And then there's an inspection after the installation which ends up keeping the warranty intact. And then the last piece was the contract, which I believe everybody has that packet from Jerry. And we're finalizing some of these issues. I think they're mostly minor issues that he outlined in the contract. And I think once we resolve those, I think we'll be ready to move forward.
Okay. Alright, so it just as reminded everyone, we had already provided a conditional approval on this project pending the outcome of some of the conversations that Kevin was having. So based on that latest update, does anyone have any comments or questions for Kevin?
Did we have a time when we need to have all this set for any cuts or, you know, I can't think of the word. Yeah. If there was a deadline to meet for the state to get any reimbursement or anything.
There's the deadline because each calendar year, the solar incentives, and I'm not sure if it's the state or the federal level to be honest with you, Joe. But there's, they change, like, so January 1st they would change. So the goal is to get the project completed before the calendar year shifts.
Okay.
I think we're on track for that. I don't anticipate the contractual issues and the adjustments to the actual physical contract to take a significant amount of time. So I'm pretty comfortable, you know, based on my conversations with the Select team, that we'll be able to complete that and move forward and still hit those deadlines.
Thank you. Mike? The question I have, Kevin, is obviously it's going to be done while the children are in session.
Correct.
And that we don't see any concerns with that as far as?
No, we'll lose some of the, like, there'll be a staging area set up at once and, you know, Rob would have the answer to that question.
Okay.
But he was very comfortable with the way they were going to stage it. I spoke with the superintendent from Fitchburg who had a number of the, like, a couple of Select projects done. And he said that they were able to kind of flawlessly put it in while school was in session. They actually did it in the spring and they had to stop during MCAS. That was the only, that was the only exception. But he didn't feel like it would necessarily even have interfered with, like, the testing, but he, you know, just to be safe.
Yeah.
You know, drilling or noise happening during MCAS. We wouldn't have those issues because we're doing it in the fall.
Correct me though if I'm wrong. I thought in our first meeting or our second meeting with the solar company, was it the contract that had to be signed by the 31st? Or the installation had to be done by the 31st of December?
The installation had to be complete.
Has to be done.
And so right now, the timeline is, to kind of Joe's question, the timeline is tight to meet that deadline.
Uh huh.
But they feel like we're still in a pretty good space.
And they feel that they can basically install it in November and just, let's just say if they're working on the roof in November and December?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Some of it's driven too by they have to get approvals from the state at different phases of the project.
Okay.
And unfortunately I don't have that in front of me. But that was one of the things that's kind of time sensitive. It could be like a forty-five day wait. Once they get a cer- to a certain point in the contract, then the energy companies have to come back and sign off at the state level, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, good. Next item is ClearGov.
Yep, yep. And this is really brief as well. Dr. Joseph has completed the onboarding process with ClearGov. So it's in the backend of our website right now. We're going to, I think Melissa sent out an invitation today. We're going to send out one tomorrow. We're going to do a subcommittee of the Marketing and Communications Committee to look at the different reports that are out there and kind of figure out how to kind of present it publicly. And so I anticipated being like live and available probably the second or third week of September is what we're hoping. And it's just a matter of reviewing the data that we're showing and making sure everybody feels comfortable with what's being presented and how it's being presented. Before we go live with it. Which is pretty standard for anything we put on the website, that's new.
Any questions on ClearGov? We are flying through this agenda today.
You could break my record, Joe.
I know. Hope we've got a lot to talk about on this next one, so. Alright, the next order of business then is the superintendent end of cycle evaluation. So I passed out a packet to everyone at the beginning of the meeting. As a reminder, Kevin had provided us an update back in June on his progress towards the goals that were set for him at the beginning of the year. The last time we did the evaluation was, in evaluation was two years ago. And we're going to follow the same process that we did then. Where I took everyone's scores and I rolled them up to come up with an overall rating. And then I attached everyone's individual evaluation. So if you want to see individual comments, you have access to that as well. But what I thought I would do is go through each of the standards and provide the overall rating and then we can open it up to any discussion and any comments that you may have. Does that sound good? So, just give a high level overview of the evaluation. The evaluation is based on four different standards. And there are four indicators for each of the standards. And so the indicators are unsatisfactory, which is the performance on a standard or overall has not significantly improved following a rating of needs improvement. Or performance is consistently below the requirements of a standard or overall and is considered inadequate or both. Needs improvement equals a performance on a standard or overall is below the requirements of a standard or overall, but is not considered to be unsatisfactory at the time. Improvement is necessary and expected. The next is proficient. Proficient practice is understood to be fully satisfactory. So this is the rigorous expected level of performance. And then exemplary is a rating of exemplary indicates that practice significantly exceeds proficient and could serve as a model of practice regionally or statewide. And then the four standards are instructional leadership. And instructional leadership, the education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. And for instructional leadership, the overall rating for Kevin is proficient. So anyone have any comments on that standard? Provide some feedback to Kevin.
So is that how you want to go through it? You want to do one standard at a time and then take feedback on that? Or do, is that the process you want, is that where you want our comments with one standard at a time?
I was thinking we could do one standard at a time and then at the end we can do a summary statement if anybody wants to. If that works for the group. So again, for instructional leadership, the overall rating is proficient. Does anyone have any comments there?
Well, do you want us to kind of highlight some of the things that we talked about?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I can, I can show some of the things that I highlighted. And also, just to elaborate a little bit on proficient. So you mentioned the level of rigor. And so when I look at proficient, I mean, that's going through the training on the evaluation rubric. That's always the, the rating that you would want to see your child's teacher at. You would want to see your child's teacher or principal or superintendent at proficient. Exemplary kind of adds, exemplary and proficient are very similar, but exemplary also adds in a modeling component. So that's kind of the big difference between proficient and exemplary, at least in the world of working with teachers. So I think it's really important to highlight that proficient is really a very, very high standard and a really positive rating for any educator. So I, when I reflected, I just thought about the number of things that have been implemented in our district in terms of high quality instruction. I think that we continually hear about professional development opportunities at our meetings, things that Kevin has attended, things that our staff has attended. Multiple intervention programs, math intervention, technology, the early college high school, the new banking program, curriculum mapping. So I think that many, many things have happened in this district instructionally in a very short period of time. Both with Kevin's work as an assistant superintendent and as a superintendent. The other thing which actually almost could go into the modeling category are a number of opportunities that this district has opened up to other districts. So Tecapalooza being an example of our work with instructional technology that was opened up to people and educators from other districts. So I think that's great that we're able to start sharing the great work that's happening here in Milford. I think that areas that we want to see continued work on are making sure that instruction is consistently applied across teachers at a grade level. And I know that's some of the work that's coming out of the curriculum mapping work. So that will be continued moving forward. I think that in terms of looking at the work that we're going to be doing for social and emotional support. Making sure that students have that foundation for learning, that's another area where the district is going to be working to make sure that we're really meeting the needs of all students. And I know we've talked about this again multiple times, making sure that our special ed students, regular ed students, students who are progressing more quickly than expected. And those who are struggling have the tools that they need in the program, materials that they need. And so I guess as a school committee, when we start talking about budget and we start talking about what are we going to fund? Is it going to be curriculum leadership roles in the district? Is it going to be more specialized programming? Those are the areas that I'd like to see us focusing more on at budget time.
Any other comments?
I'm not going to say anything to follow that.
No, that was, that was a great.
Other than good job.
That's a great, a great summary.
No, that's great, Jen. Thank you for laying all that out.
Just to touch on a couple of things here. And Jen covered, I think, a lot of it. Overall, you had a really strong year in terms of instructional leadership, you know, starting with all the professional development that you brought to the district. Restructuring the math curriculum at the middle school level, introducing the new banking program, the global citizenship program, advancing the early childhood, sorry, early college, high school college initiative. Partnering with Framingham State and Mass Bay. And then you started the process, which is going to be critical to our future success that you touched on. Started the process of developing a new strategic plan for the district going forward. And that's certainly going to be one of the goals for you this year is moving forward with that strategic plan and with the long range plan as well. And the other area that I'd like to see you focus on for the coming year as well is just continue to do what you guys have been doing in terms of collecting data and basing all the decisions that you make on the data that you receive. I think you do a good job with that. But I don't think that is as transparent to the community. So, you know, circling back to the conversation with ClearGov. I think that will give a lot more transparency to the community around some of the data points that you use to make some of the decisions across the district. And we just need to continue to be transparent in that manner, continue to use that data effectively. So overall, again, a proficient rating, so a strong, strong first year for instructional leadership. And then the second standard is, so standard two is management and operations. Promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment. Using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing, and scheduling. Does anyone have any comments in this section? Oh, sorry. And the overall rating for that was proficient as well.
Joe? I think that, I think proficient is a great score, Kevin, for you in this area because I think you do a great job working with your staff, working with your administrators, the teachers. You're very involved. Jen touched on it earlier with professional development. You know, you're a good listener, you know, you're a good.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Mike?
You know, you, you do a great job in, you know, keeping the troops, you know, focused on what's important. So I think you're, you know, as far as your management and your, in your operations, you know, you look at the overall. And when I look, think of operations, I don't just think of the day-to-day operations of the school. I look at the operations, I look at the buildings and, you know, everything that you're responsible for. And I think whenever something goes wrong or there's a concern, you know, you get right on it and it gets handled right away. So I think that you surely deserve that grade.
Great, thank you.
Good, Jen. I would only say, I mean, I would echo everything Mike said. I think you do a fantastic job. There's certainly a lot of moving parts going on. And I think that, you know, not only yourself, but the rest of your staff are obviously immensely qualified to keep everything going on a daily basis. The one thing that I would, the only thing that I would add to that is I would like to see a little more accountability at the lower levels in terms of task management and rolling out two timelines and a little more organizational accountability in terms of how information is moved throughout the district. So I've seen some examples where I don't think messages are clearly transmitted from the higher levels down, creating confusion within the district and areas. Thank you.
Any other comments on this section, Jen?
No, you can, Joe.
I just wanted to highlight that in terms of operations, so many things have shifted in the Milford Public Schools. For first year superintendent to command and be dealing with the closing of a school, deciding whether or not a school would be declared surplus, which was kind of controversial around the town, dealing with moving one grade level from eighth grade to Stacy, another grade level from Stacy to the new Woodland. Opening a sixty-plus million dollar building. On top of that, I think anytime you have administrative changes, other dominoes fall, resulting in a complete shift of the administrative staff last year. So on top of all the site issues and the facility issues, you're also dealing with building a new leadership team and kind of trying to build a relationship in a core group to run our schools. And it seems like those things went really as well as we could have expected. We heard relatively little, not that it wasn't communicated, but we didn't hear, oh my God, this was a disaster or this didn't go well. I think more than anything, we heard people reflecting, you know, Tim came in and reflected on things that were going to, that he wanted to see improve because they opened up, you know, this brand new thousand student elementary school. I think we've also talked about hiring and supporting the recruitment process. And I think that's something that you have mentioned that you're really looking at and making sure that we bring the best teachers into Milford. And that we help the teachers that are already in Milford build their skill set. And I think that's a huge part of your responsibility is that you're working with and you're aware of. We spent, as we all know, an ungodly number of hours working on the budget this year. And that's never an easy process. But somehow we ended up at a place where we were able to compromise and work collaboratively with the FINCOM to come up with a budget that seemed reasonable for the town and the taxpayers, but that was still going to meet some of the educational goals that we had for our students. I think that moving forward, one area that I would also like to see continue to be worked on, and I think you've already referenced that you will be, is making sure that Stacy continues to build its culture as a five to seven building and that the new Woodland continues to build its culture as a grade three to five building. You know, I think getting everybody in there and settled and getting a school year under their belt was critically important during the sixteen, seventeen year. But now bringing those people together and really making those systems work in the most beneficial way will be an important part of the work moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, I had, Kevin, I was going to put proficient on this, but one of the things that stuck out and I put needs improvement was, I know a couple of years back, we had some of the students here giving, you know, their little speech and what's happening at school. Some of them saying, you know, they just don't feel safe here. And we've, we've improved in that. I'm pretty sure everyone feels safe here as well. And I believe a lot of that goes back to behavioral issues and discipline that's really, I don't think is consistent throughout the whole district. So that was one of the things I put on here. And with the launch of the Social Emotional Learning Committee that's going, I think that will wipe itself out. And I don't think there'll be a problem moving forward. But that was just one of the things I thought needed improvement on. And with new, new staff coming in, I think it'd be better too that everyone gets on the same page too.
Yep.
But other than that, Kevin, I thought it was flawless.
Great, thank you.
Some of this might sound redundant. I think you guys have covered it all. But I read you as proficient in this category as well. I thought you did, or demonstrated the ability to manage the school district effectively. As Jen touched on, the Woodland project was a tremendous undertaking on so many different levels. And then you factor in the turnover that you had with the leadership team and your ability to build your team throughout the year. All during your first year as superintendent too. And that's the other thing we can't lose sight of as well. This was your first year and you had a lot going on. And then throughout the budget process, you clearly advocate, you were a strong advocate for the budget. That supports the learning grow- and growth of all students that serve the, within the built of public schools. And then the one-on-one initiative and all the work done there, you know, planning, following through, preparing and rolling out that plan took a lot of work, not just from your part, but on the part of your, your team as well. And then the knee ask accreditation here at the high school, I know was a big undertaking also. So you had a very full first year. And I think in this standard, you were very, very successful and proficient.
Great, thank you.
Alright, the next standard is standard three, family and community engagement. Promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school and district. And in this category, the overall rating was proficient as well. Any comments here?
If I may. Kevin, again, I personally gave you exemplary in this category. And I go back to your engagement in the community. The Saturday that we opened up the new youth center, you and Craig both attended, you know, which shows that you're engaged in the community, that you're engaged in children, which I thought was really great. Being out a lot in the evening at different meetings, I, you know, town hall, you're on town hall, town meeting. You know, you're always there, going to the end of the school year, senior week, you're at all the events for senior week. But your engagement in the schools all year long, all the different programs that are going in, you're very visible to the children and to the staff and to the parents in all these activities. So I personally, I do, I think you're very engaged. I think you're very open. I think you're, you know, you listen when your parents have a concern and you try to address things right away. And I know you're very active getting in and out of the schools. So, great job. Thank you.
So I echo Mike. So I also gave you exemplary in this category. I really feel like you're extremely accessible, extremely visible. I'll echo, I'll echo what Mike said again. But if you look at things like the summer feeding program, the summer reading program, I mean, it's not only, you know, during the year. It's, you know, throughout the summer as well. Your continued visibility and accessibility, I think, just makes you, you know, more endearing to the district. And allows you to kind of impart your roadmap, your curriculum roadmap, and as well as the ideas, you know, that you, that you bring. But you also continue to build relationships, you know, with the amount of visibility and, and I'll say it again, accessibility that you, you do allow. You know, and I know I don't want to sound redundant there, but I don't want to also miss the importance of those two words. Because a lot of times, you know, when you have someone who has such a large scope, you oftentimes don't get the ability to interact with them as intimately as you've allowed. And I think that helps build relationships and pushes the district forward in many levels. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I also echo what Jim and Mike have said. And just to add a little bit to that, one part of the standard also talks about being culturally sensitive and respecting the diversity, which obviously we know we have a lot of different cultures represented in Milford. And I think we continue to see supports for families from different backgrounds, different ethnicities. There's always something interpreted. There's always people available to support people who aren't going to understand something in English. And there's just been a lot of outreach to include families and to make them feel welcome and part of the district. And that, that takes extra effort. And that's, I feel like that's gone on during your assistant superintendency and it's continued. Thank you for your work with that.
Yeah, I mean, exactly. But one of the other things I like about it more is that you're getting a lot more forums out there. There's a lot more things where parents can come to these schools and see exactly what's happening. We're getting all the information we can out there. We can't always reach everybody, but you do try to get as much as possible to every person out in this town. And it's, it's working. And for that, I gave you proficient as well. And just like everyone else, it's outstanding work and how you're bringing everybody in to let them know exactly what's happening in the district.
Thank you.
Are you going to tweet out your evaluation after this?
I read like eleven thousand five hundred for you.
I think, and that's clearly an example of how well you communicate. You know, Twitter's been, I think, a big part of your, your time here as a superintendent. You definitely are using social media effectively to promote what's going on in the schools. And you've got the staff to buy into it as well. The staff is doing it. So, you know, that's having an impact on the perception of our schools, but more importantly, it's improving the communication with the, with the community. You've done a ton of work with the, the marketing subcommittee, you know, the local media roundtable, the realtor, realtor roundtable. The high school presentations of Stacy Middle Schools, the eighth grade visits up here to the high school, activities and athletics night, the curriculum night. So you're doing a great job engaging the community and promoting the schools. And that's something that we wanted you to continue make, continue with, on with that momentum, right? Because you, this is your first year as superintendent. You've been in Milford for what, four, four years now?
Yeah, this will be year five, yeah.
Year five. So it's important to continue to build those relationships with the community, with other town departments. And this is, I think, an area where you could quickly move from proficient to exemplary and be a model for other, other districts. So, nice job.
Great, thank you.
And then the standard four is professional culture. Promotes success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. And the overall rating here was proficient as well. Any comments here? Mike?
Kevin, when I was looking at this standard, I thought of a perfect example was when Dr. Josephson was interviewing for the assistant superintendent's position, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, Woodland principal.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, Woodland principal. And you saw something in him. You said, you know what, this guy, he'd be perfect to take over our IT department. And he really wasn't interested, but you kept working with him and working with him and working with him. And you finally convinced him to take the, take the opportunity. And he's taken our, you know, our IT learning to a whole new level, in my opinion. So that, to me, that's an example of, you know, your, your professional culture. You saw something in somebody and said, listen, I just need to convince them that in my opinion, as superintendent or assistant superintendent at the time, whatever it was, you said, I just think you'd be better off over here because you can do so much more for us, which he, which he has.
And I intentionally went to his office because he, so he couldn't walk out.
You know, but I.
Stand by the door.
I, I look at the people that you've surrounded yourself with since you, you know, been the superintendent and you've done a really great job, you know, selecting great people to, you know, to help you move this district forward. And, 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 you know, to what everybody has said this evening, you know, this district is def- definitely going forward. I, I give you credit, you know. We talked about it last year. We opened a brand-new elementary school, you know, uh, you know, and ran the district. And I won't say it was flawless, but it was pretty close. It was pretty close, you know. And I know personally, I didn't get a lot of, a lot of conversation from any parents, so I think you did a great job.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments?
Uh, so I'll say, um, again, I ranked you as exemplary in this category only because, uh, uh, not only, but because, um, I, I go back to the relationship, um, comment from the last, um, from the last section. I just feel that, um, you have such a great ability to develop relationships, uh, not only with your, uh, staff, which, you know, you've built a, a phenomenal staff around you as well. Um, so, you know, that culture that you, that you, that you're building kinda, um, permeates through the, through the district. And I also wanted to take a second to just applaud you for your ability to look at, um, curriculum kind of outside the box. Um, you know, not only the, uh, roadmap to college, but also, you know, looking at the business curriculum, looking at McWick, looking at ways that we can develop curriculum opportunities for kids, um, that are going to college and kids that may not be on a college track. I think it's important to recognize the hard work that you and your, your extremely talented staff, um, put into those initiatives. So, I, that's, that's why I thought you guys did such a phenomenal, like, you did such a phenomenal job in this category as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Jen?
Um, so I looked at a couple of the different elements in this standard. Uh, one was shared vision development. And it talks about, um, developing a vision focused on student preparation for college and career readiness, civic engagement and community contributions. And I think we've also heard multiple times throughout the community and in our meetings about the number of things that our students have done that have put them right out there, um, in terms of charitable contributions, civic engagement, um, the whole best buddies program.
Which is awesome.
The, the, the Special Olympics. I mean, there are so many things that are happening in this district, um, that promotes thinking of others and not just yourself. And, and, I mean, I, I think one meeting we had where there were two athletes here and each of them kept praising the other one, either one of them, and that-
That was shit. That, that's case in point.
That was, that was, might, might have been the high point of the year, actually. It was a fantastic moment.
So we're, you know, y- you can see that you're trying to develop that selfless student here. Um, we also have other types of opportunities for students, like the global citizen, global citizenship that was highlighted, um, here as well. Um, that's, uh, uh, again, another new program at our high school, um, giving kids those outlets. I know we heard it from the new principal at his orientation. Um, just last week for freshmen was finding that right spot for yourself at the high school. And we have a high school right now that has so many spots for students to become involved. And I've heard you say it to students as well, find something, get, get involved, become part of something. And you appreciate the importance and the impact of that. Um, another part of this standard talks about managing conflict. And I think whether or not we hear about all the conflicts, I'm positive that you deal with conflict every single day in your position. Whether it's staffing or dealing with depart- different departments around town. And, um, every time we see you in a situation like that, you approach it with a sense of calm and a sense of finding a solution. And that's, that's really the only way that you can survive in these positions and help forward momentum. Um, and I think you also understand the art of compromise, which sometimes you have to make in order to get to a solution. Um, another thing that you rolled out this year was the new platform for the ed evaluation system. A lot of systems dump thousands of dollars into a system and you worked with our staff and embraced the ideas, you know, from Matt Joseph and others, and I'm sure your own, uh, to come up with a system that really worked and didn't cost us a dime. And, um, and that's, that's been shared also at Techapalooza and other, other forums as well, um, so other educators can become proficient in using some of the tools that we've been working on. Um, I think moving forward, um, a couple of the areas, I think we've already touched on them, that I could see as being goal areas and I know already are, are that the whole social emotional piece and making sure that all those needs are met, um, especially when we do look at our younger students, um, kinda those middle, middle difficult years. Um, I think really working with staff to understand, um, again, I think it goes back to the consistency in instruction and making sure that activity is, and you've talked about it too, it's not your evaluation, but.
Well, why don't you do yours, man?
But I think really ensuring that teachers continue to have that training in, how do I know an activity that I give my students really matches the objective that we're trying to achieve? And those big ideas and those big understandings we want kids to walk away with in, in a common way at each grade level. Um, and I think just continuing the great work that you're doing with communicating and getting the message out about what's happening in a positive way in Milford and modeling that for our staff. So, uh, everyone understands the value and the significance of sharing what's happening in the classroom, what's happening at a school level, what's happening at the district level. Because there are so many great things going on. We want people to be celebrating the good work. I didn't talk about my rating for each, um, standard, but I did rate you proficient each, each standard. And I think, um, you've done a great job, just an amazing job in your first year. And I look forward to your work in the upcoming year. So, thank you.
So, Joe?
Um, so I also rated you as, as proficient in this, this standard as well. Um, the focus on continuous learning and rethinking professional de- development is certainly commendable. And I know this has been, uh, an area of focus for you, uh, during, throughout your entire time, uh, uh, within our, our district, uh, being a part of the climate, culture and morale committee. Um, you know, you're very focused on trying to create a, a positive culture throughout the, the entire district. Um, you know, Jen touched on the vision earlier, uh, and I, I mentioned this, uh, on, on a prior standard, but, uh, you've already started the process of developing the new strategic plan, the new, new long-range plan. Um, and that process is gonna be critical of the future su- success in the public schools and will lead to a collective vision for our schools with consensus around goals and objectives, a means of demonstrating accountability and a vehicle for sustained improvement. And finalizing these plans and gaining community support should be your, your primary goal for the, for the upcoming year. But as Jen pointed out, overall, um, you know, very, a very strong year for you, especially your first year as a superintendent. Uh, we've made a lot of progress this year, as Mike mentioned. And when you think about all the work that was done with, with, with technology, with the Woodland project, uh, the new, the new team that you brought on board, um, and everything that's happening in, in, in the classroom. And we're very fortunate to have a strong leadership team, uh, as well as great staff throughout the whole, whole district. So, uh, overall, a really good year.
Yeah, very good.
Alright, anyone else have any final comments for Kevin?
No, I just, thank you, you know, for your hard work. I mean, as everybody has said, it's lots of hours, lots of time, lots of time out of your house here. You're here for everything. Um, we all notice that. We're all extremely appreciative and I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and great job.
Well done.
Thank you.
Good.
So we, we, as I said, we, we do need a, a vote on the, the overall score of, of proficient. So do I have a, a motion for the overall score of proficient? Motion from Mike.
Yep.
Seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Can I just make a couple of comments?
Yeah, nice.
You know I can walk away without saying anything.
Just ma- just make it short.
Yeah, turn on the clock.
For the next hour and a half.
Right. Let me walk you through my theory.
I wanna walk you through point by point. Um, first, thank you. I appreciate it. These are, like, being kind of evaluated publicly is kind of a, a funky weird thing. You know, just, even if it's, you know, generally, and, and I think it was overwhelmingly positive, which I appreciate. But, um, I d- I wanna thank you, 'cause I think, you know, your job too is kind of a thankless job as well. Um, and, and you guys put in a lot of hours and a lot of time because you're committed to the community. And, and I wanna thank you for that too, 'cause I do appreciate it. Because I think without your support, a lot of the things that we're doing just wouldn't get accomplished, just period. And I think the fact that, you know, we've got a committee that really works together, um, for the common goal of kinda making the best possible experiences for the students of Milford, I think is gonna lead to just great outcomes in the future. So, that's my kinda three sixty feedback back to you. Um, the other piece is like, you know, every day when I drive into work, I just love my job. I walk in and I'm happy to be here. And I haven't been that way at every job I've had over the course of my life, but every day I come in, I'm enthusiastic, I'm excited. Uh, you know, Kathy and Craig are the same way. You know, we have a very positive group that, you know-
Craig's excited?
Look at him.
Is that what that looks like?
He's dynamic.
I'm just kidding. I'm sorry. I know this is supposed to be serious.
But, but I think a lot of the folks that are doing the work have that same, like, love and enthusiasm. I think that does make a difference. Um, and most of the things you mentioned, um, were a team effort. You know, it's, it's really a team effort. The, you know, the Google evaluation, the fact that we're gonna be completely wireless by the end of September. I mean, these are, these are huge projects. The, you know, the curriculum work that's going on, the budget work, the, you know, the hours that Kathy and Craig put in alone on those is incredible. Um, but the, but the whole team, you know, brings us together. And I think that's, that's a big part of it, you know. I can, you know, I can't really take credit for any of it because it, it's, it's such a group, group effort. It really is a group effort. Um, and again, you know, just to close, I appreciate the work you're doing. Um, and I'm, and I'm, you know, I'm enjoying it. I'm looking forward to continue on. Because it's, it's work that I love, love the Milford community, and it, and I just love being here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think it's important to also say thank you to Kathy and Craig, you know, for their hard work as well, 'cause without a solid team, you know, Kevin's job would be a lot harder.
And the real boss is sitting right behind you, so.
That's right.
Right.
Well, Melissa, Melissa, Melissa's really what drives this whole part. And of course, I'm talking about Melissa Orff.
Who do you think does the work when they all go home? I mean, Melissa's still, she's probably working right now.
And you thought you weren't gonna be on camera today.
And Melissa's awesome. I mean, she's phenomenal.
So it goes, you know, quite honestly though, seriously, it goes back to cu- to, uh, culture, right? I mean, so, you know, I think you could clearly see, you know, people are happy. And I think that, that's huge in any role, right, in any organization.
Makes a, makes a huge difference.
It makes, it ma- it can make or break. So, I mean, obviously you wanna have talent, which we have, but you also wanna have motivation. You wanna have people that are, that feel that they're contributing and making an impact. And I think that that's, that's critical. And you can see that clearly in this, in this, I don't wanna say staff, but in your, you know, in your team.
Yep, I agree. Hundred percent.
Thanks, everybody. Alright, so moving on, next order of business is the report of the assistant superintendent for business and human resources.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the warrant. And we have nine warrants for, uh, the committee's approval this evening. The first warrant is in the amount of four thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
Do I have a motion? Motion from Joe, seconded by Jim. All in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of nine thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-four cents.
Do I have a motion? Motion from Mike, seconded by Jen. All in favor?
The third warrant is in the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred eleven and ninety-nine cents.
Do I have a motion? Motion from Jim, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
The fourth warrant is in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Do I have a motion? Motion from Mike, seconded by Jen. All in favor?
The fifth warrant is in the amount of seven thousand five hundred ten dollars and sixty cents.
Motion from Joe, seconded by Jim. All in favor?
The sixth warrant is in the amount of two hundred eighty thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-one cents.
Do I have a motion from Mike, seconded by Jen. All in favor?
The seventh waris- warrant is in the amount of two thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Motion from Jim, seconded by Mike. All in favor?
The eighth warrant is in the amount of seventy-three thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents.
Motion from Jen, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
The last warrant is in the amount of fifty-six thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-one cents.
Motion from Mike, seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Uh, the committee has this evening a, uh, budget transfer request for FY seventeen. Um, I just want to, um, discuss how the budget transpired over the course of the year. As you know, as we started our, uh, fiscal year, we had, uh, four significant issues as we began, which was, um, having a one-to-one nurse come on board. We had a few out-of-district placements that were not originally in our FY seventeen budget, along with four retirements that came with a contractual obligation and replacement. And, uh, also the utilities for the East Building all had to be incorporated in our budget. And having said that, we managed our budget over the course of the year with a, um, surplus of twelve hundred dollars at the end of the year. Um, in addition to that, as the, uh, budget cycle transpired, as you can see in the, uh, budget transfer request, we had two areas of concern that we have addressed, I believe, in our FY eighteen budget, one being athletics. We have increased our local operating budget to, um, accrue some of the debt that we have here in the amount of eighty-six, eighty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. In addition to that, our transportation budget was of concern this year. And we did bring on the, uh, second wheelchair bus for FY eighteen, which we should see a significant, uh, surplus over the next five, six, ten years with that additional bus that we've brought on. Um, in addition to, um, having the deficits, one of the areas that we were able to manage these cost impacts was the fact that we did have significant staff, um, unfortunately, out of, um, district for the school year. We had twenty-six, um, significant illnesses in our teaching staff that left some additional, uh, funding that we could use to offset these deficits. And having said that, I'm requesting the committee to transfer six hundred thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars to bring our budget to a, um, a solvent twelve hundred remaining.
Okay, thanks Kathy.
And where are we transferring that from, Kathy?
Uh, from in your budget transfer. In the addition, most of the, um, surplus areas were salary lines. Basically because we either had, um, illness, sick leave, um, savings. We did have, um, small amount in professional development, but for the most part, uh, well, uh, significant savings in heat, I should add that. Um, that significantly saved us to, um, maintain a surplus.
So you're basically reallocating from line items.
Correct, with your approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the budget transfers? Motion from Joe, seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Uh, in addition, you have the stat of the year FY eighteen budget update. I'm sure you've noticed we have significant, um, surplus right now in our instruction line. That, uh, is simply, all of our new teaching staff have not been encumbered for the school year yet. So, all of their, uh, paperwork has to be submitted in order for us to encumber those funds. Um, just quickly, I wanna give a quick update on our capital funds and, and the projects. The fire doors, as we've reported, are sixty percent complete at Stacy, uh, which is good news. The elevator at Stacy is a hundred percent complete and operating. Um, what else do we have? There was a, uh, significant high school. If you've been in the auditorium, you've noticed some of the lights have been, um, burnt out. So they've all been replaced with LED lighting, which again will be a cost-saving measure for FY eighteen. Um, we have seventeen projectors newly installed across Stacy and Memorial, Memorial having two, Stacy having fifteen over the summer. Uh, quick update on our E-plus, or I should say our E-rate project. We are, um, completely wired at the high school. Our access points are all installed. And now the, um, engineer is, um, handling all of the switch, switches for the entire high school. So I think we're gonna be all set or close to it for the start of school. So we will meet our deadline for E-rate for the September thirtieth deadline. So that project is, um, moving to completion. So that's everything that's happening in the FY eighteen budget. Um, the committee also has a list of, um, all new hires. It's significant. It's simply, um, a majority of our stipendary positions mentors. Uh, it is for your, um, acknowledgement only. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for Kathy? Mike?
Kathy, just real quick, where, where did we end up at the end of the year? What was the total number of retirements in the district?
Ooh, I'd have to, well, we had-
It shifted a little bit.
It shifted a little bit. We have two teachers above and beyond the four or five that we had that are retiring in seventeen, eighteen. One in October and one in November. That will help, um, the FY eighteen budget. In addition, we had, um, gosh, two teacher, three veteran teachers, uh, resigned over the course of the last couple of weeks. One at the high school, an art teacher, a social studies at Stacy, and a music teacher at Stacy have all moved to other districts. They're all getting closer to home, is essentially what I believe.
Hmm. Now, if you don't mind me asking, why would teachers retire in October and November?
Birth dates.
Oh.
And so we've got transition plans for both those teachers.
Yes.
In place already. And we'll have, um, we'll have the hiring done well before their, their retirement date.
Okay.
And there'll be like an overlap for the teachers coming in.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Uh, and Kathy, remind me again, a- a- after we finish wiring the, the high school, are all the schools done, or is this still another school we have to do?
Brookside was also, um, managed this summer as well.
It was, okay.
High school in Brookside.
Alright, good, so after that, we're, we're good?
Wired, K through twelve.
Excellent, okay. Good, thanks Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, next agenda item is, uh, future agenda items. Does anyone have any future agenda items?
Hmm?
Nope. Old business, anyone have any old business?
I think, I, Kevin, I would ask if you was, this year was, that was a, a, a great idea that you had every meeting, you'd bring in the high school student, uh, given up there. We can continue on with that, just so that the committee is a committee, we know, we have a good idea of what's going on at the, at the high school.
Yep, we'll probably start that maybe end of September, really, actually, cause it takes-
The student government transitions a little time to kinda get into place.
Yes, thank you very much.
And, um, with our old, old business, we also have, uh, just a reminder, uh, Monday night for a select meeting, uh, we'll be doing the BBT appointment.
What time is that, Joe? Seven?
Seven o'clock, yeah. Alright, um, we do have an executive session tonight, and, and we'll not be returning from executive session. Um, the executive session is gonna be to negotiate, uh, the superintendent's, uh, contract for next year. Um, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
You need roll call first.
Oh, it's not motion first and then roll call?
Yeah, yeah, roll call then adjourn.
Alright, so roll, roll call for adjournment?
Executive session, yeah.
To go into executive session, sorry.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. Alright, now do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion for Mike, seconded by Jim, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.